There are a few other items under the superintendent's report which we've mentioned. A number of student awards, and I'd ask Pat if she could mention some of those student awards.
Awards are for the music department. The first is the fact that the National Association of Music Merchants has an arm of the association that supports music education, advocates for music education, and one of the things it does is to name communities throughout the country that exemplify community commitment to include music education as part of equality education for all children. And we're pleased to announce that the Belmont Public Schools have been named once again as one of the top 100 communities in the country who provide that kind of appropriate music education for children. In addition, we send congratulations to Sharon Phipps and the Channery Middle School Jazz Ensemble for receiving a gold medal at the Junior High Jazz Festival recently. Also pleased to inform you and the public that the Belmont High School Jazz Choir and the Belmont High School Jazz Combo received gold medals at the Massachusetts Chapter of the International Association of Jazz Educators Festival that was held in mid-April. We had nine ensembles perform at the Massachusetts Instrumental and Choral Conductors Association. That festival took place early in April, and of those nine performers, all of them won medals: gold medal for the Chamber Choir, a gold medal for the Freshmen Women's Choir, silver medal for the Freshmen Men's Choir, silver medal for the Corral, silver medal for both the Concert Orchestra and the Wind Ensemble, and a bronze medal for the Symphonic Band. At the middle school, there was a silver medal, excuse me, for the Upper School String Orchestra, and a silver medal for the sixth grade string orchestra. So our music groups are certainly medal winners. And lastly, Dennis Fitzpatrick announced that Seth Ripken has been accepted to the New England Young Writers Conference at Middlebury College. It's quite an honor for him, and we're very, very pleased, and congratulations to all of these students for the awards.
Thanks, Pat. A number of other things to mention. The Boston Globe had an article about Chinese spoken here, mentioning a number of the school districts that taught Mandarin, and there was a nice section about Belmont. Belmont has offered Chinese at the high school for 10 years, added a middle school program in 2004. A nice series of quotations from Janice Darius, director of Foreign Language Department. The program started with 31 students taking Mandarin in 1998, and now in 2008, there are 238 students that are taking Mandarin. So I think it's an important part of what we do. Smart boards. We may have announced this the last time, but through the, you know, the contributions made at the Foundation Dinner Reception Auction, we raised enough money for about 30 smart boards, I think. Yeah, they're going to be placed in the, throughout all the schools, a good number of them, I believe, are at the middle school. Also, there were some Learning Excellence Awards, I think about $8,000 in those. The school committee has in their packets some information, a letter from Lynn Doblin highlighting those. So, once again, we're very grateful to the Foundation for what they've contributed to the school system. I think since its inception, it's over $1.5 million in gifts have been given to the teachers in the system and to the system itself from the Foundation, so that's been a tremendous gift. In terms of MCAS, the class of 2008, all the seniors have passed both the English and the math exams, so if they do not graduate, it will not be because of MCAS, it will be for some other reason. Hopefully, most of them or all of them will graduate. The class of 2009, two students from the junior class need to pass the English portion of MCAS. Both students were absent from last year's exam. Students took the exam earlier this month. All juniors have passed the math portion of the MCAS exam. Anything else on this, Mike? That's the latest. So, once again, the students are doing well relative to the MCAS requirements. Metco support, I think everyone saw, and I sent out some additional information today on the Metco funding for next year. Initially, it had gone up by, I think, a million or a million and a half dollars, then it got beaten back again. Now it's back up again to a million dollar increase. That's for all 36 school districts, 3,000 kids at Metco. And it's, so the House has approved it, the Senate needs to approve it, we need to get Senate approval. So what Kathy Tang, who does a lot of the communications for Metco, Inc., has suggested is that we thank the folks that voted in favor of it, including our own Will Brownsberger and next-door neighbor Jay Kaufman, who's from Lexington. Thank them for their support. We also try to talk to the Senate and get their support for it, particularly Steve Tolman, who in the past has been very supportive, and ask for their support for this. It's a very tight budget year, as we know, so if we can get their help, it'd be very good. On Memorial Day exercises, I think we've announced this before, but we'll announce it again. Friday, May 23rd, we start off at 8:00 a.m. with the program at the high school, and continental breakfast between the veterans and a group of students at the high school. We move to Wellington at 9:00, Wimbrooke at 10:00. They have a luncheon at VFW at 11:30. School committee's invited to any and all of this. You could be part of it. Come on along. If you can only make the lunch like me, come to that, too. It's always fun to find the veterans. Really appreciate seeing you. And then, there's a special award that Bob Martin got, and I'd ask Jerry, who was present at the award, to describe it.
Thank you. On April 22nd, which was Earth Day, the United States Environmental Protection Agency, known to all of us as the EPA, had a very nice ceremony at Faneo Hall, giving a number of environmental awards to different individuals and organizations. And one of the awards went to an organization, which is the Massachusetts Facility Administrators' Association, which is the organization that Bob Martin, as Supervisor of Buildings and Grounds, belongs to, because Bob, with many other colleagues within that organization, have been working for the past two years in the committee to develop training materials to run workshops to train their colleagues who are new to the profession. It's an example of Bob and others with great experience sharing their expertise with their own colleagues, and the EPA recognized this and gave a very nice award to each individual member on that committee. If you're interested, I'll just pass this around, and you can take a look at it. It was a pleasure to be there, and there was a lot of different organizations. In fact, there's a Boy Scout who was honored, I saw on Channel 5 News Tonight, who had a scout project about getting fishermen to not use lead sinkers. He was given an award by the EPA, a special award at the ceremony. So I was pleased to see Bob recognized as part of his organization.
Thanks very much, Jerry, and that's my report.
Sure. You're done now? You're handing this to me?
[laughter] Next item is the chairman's report. First, I'd like to congratulate someone who recently got a PhD in EDD, in Educational Leadership, that's Dr. Mike Harvey. And what else? You mentioned the Foundation awarding so many thousand dollars for smart boards. The, you'll recall the Kendall School for the Arts, which burned down in 1990-something, had some money left over, and they gave that to the Belmont Public Schools through the Foundation for Belmont Education for a technology-rich art room initiative. So that will be funding $35,000 worth of smart boards and training and software that goes with that. So we, you know, benefit through the Kendall School for the Arts. That's in addition to all the other things that the Foundation does. So that's, you might not think of arts and technology, but there is a lot going on in those areas that you wouldn't think. And what else? Brendan Grant will have its annual, Brendan's Run on Father's Day. It's a 5K road race, and it's shorter races for smaller kids at the track. It's whatever day, June 19th or something like that, it's Father's Day, so I hope to see you all there. Some of you, anyway. And I guess that's it for the chairman's report. Next item would be citizens' concerns. I don't see any movement in the crowd, so I'll just say that we have none. First major item of business would be a special education overview with our very own Ken Schremer.
We invite Ken to come forward, and also with his Bernadette, Conroy Bernadette's the Assistant Director of Student Services. Ken is in his first year in this role, and each year, as in the past, we've, where we've invited, excuse me, in the past, Ed Orinstein, and then Sally Smith, at least two times, sometimes three times, to school committee meetings to come and let us know what's happening in this area, talk to us a bit about some of the kinds of things that are going on, particularly in terms of the new programs, and we're delighted to have Ken with us. Ken appeared, as you might recall, in December. It was also the time when we talked about full-day kindergarten, so we had hundreds of people here, most of whom were focused on full-day kindergarten. So Ken has the audience and the school committee entirely to himself this evening, and we're delighted to have you with us, Ken. Look forward to your report.
Thanks. What I wanted to do today was just sort of briefly revisit some of the information that I had provided in the fall. It's unfortunate I don't have the deflection of the kindergarten, because that helped that move along a lot more quickly. What I have provided for you are actually three sort of sets of information. One of them are the sped enrollment figures for the last few years, and the other are two sort of informational updates. One of the reasons I provided these sped enrollment figures is I take a look at these periodically. I mean, we do a report in October, and we do a report in March. And what this allows us to do is take a look at not just the number of students that we're serving, but where we're serving them, the kinds of needs the students have. It helps us plan for programming, it helps us take a look at how well our programming is serving who's in the district. And then I try to come to some sort of conclusions and overall general trends. I hesitate to come to any kind of sweeping conclusions because the data is very fluid, it's a snapshot in time, and, you know, you can't necessarily read as much into it as you might if we're doing some actual formal research or investigation. But one of the things that I was able to come up with is that, for the most part, in the last four years, we're serving roughly the same amount of students that we've been serving. I don't think we've gone up a heck of a lot or down a heck of a lot. I did the percentages out according to overall enrollment, and we were about 14.5% to 15% special ed students for the last few years. The latest on the March 1st count were 13.8. I'm not sure that's a statistically relevant difference, so I would be hesitant to say that we've reduced our numbers. But for the most part, I think we're doing a very good job serving about the same amount of kids. One of the things that we're trying to do overall is formalize how we're serving some of the populations that might better serve the district's interests financially by serving them in-house as opposed to sending them out. Over the last couple of years, Sally Smith worked to develop the emotional handicap programs that we have. We have one now operating at each level. We have an elementary, a middle school, and a high school component of those programs. That's bridge, opportunity, and campus. And that's one of the handouts that I gave you. The top half of this is a repeat of the information that I had given you in the fall, and then the bottom half is just an update of where we are since then. And across the district, we're serving 30 to 40 students within our socio-emotional support programs. And additionally, at Belmont High School, the campus PM program is providing added emotional support and academic services to as many as eight to 12 students daily. One of the nice things about the afternoon program at the high school is we are also using that as a means of RTI, response to intervention. Because of the reauthorization of IDEA, we are allowed to use some of our special ed funding and programs to support students in an effort to provide an intervention that will sort of stabilize the situation, allow them to be mainstreamed, and it's looked at as short-term. Why pick a kid up on an IEP if really what they need is some level of short-term intervention, and then they would be fine? The afternoon component has allowed us some flexibility at the high school, and we've used that with a handful of regular ed students as well as our special ed students, and it's worked out very well. We are hoping to return three students to these programs from out-of-district placements at the beginning of the school year, and that will be a savings of $180,000. Again, I wouldn't jump up and down. We can get three kids move in, and that would use $180,000, but I think it's incumbent upon us to obviously use our programs, you know, to the best capacity that we can and make sure that where we can save, we save, and where students are needy and they need our help, we have that to provide for them. We continue to look for ways to save money within existing placements by evaluating the services and placements in comparison to the fluidity of student needs. Two students are currently slated to switch placements to ones that are less restrictive and costly while still meeting the students' academic and socio-emotional needs. For those folks who don't know, special ed programs, IEDs, are reviewed annually. That goes for all of the students in our out-of-district placements. Bernadette, myself, and we, I, Sally Smith, is doing some, and we have another out-of-district coordinator, and the four of us go to meetings out of district to represent the students as well as Belmont. And what comes up in those discussions is, does the student really need that placement? Can he be moved to a least restrictive placement? And in some instances, the answer is yes. So we have a few students who are looking to switch placements. We're not able to bring them back, but we're able to identify other placements that are just as supportive of their needs, but less costly, not as comprehensive. The second piece of information that you have is in regards to our preschool and autism. Again, the first two halves of this paper were what I provided for you in the fall. And the bottom is the update as of today. So as of February 2008, an additional part-time preschool teacher was added to run a class serving newly enrolled students in our preschool. This class currently meets three mornings a week. In September of 2008, this preschool class will increase to both morning and afternoon sessions to meet the needs of additionally enrolled students. And in September 2008, a second autism inclusion program will begin, and this program's going to be housed at the Burbank, so we're pretty excited about that. Bernadette has worked very closely with Chris Francis, Lauren Rosenbine, who's our current inclusion specialist. We are hiring a second inclusion specialist to help oversee that program, and we're pretty excited about being able to expand. That was a lot. Is there anything?
I actually have some additional data. I think we can find it here. Yes, many papers here. One is some information, I think Ann had asked for just a clarification on some of the numbers by quarter, and so we, actually, Jerry pulled this together, so let me give this out to everyone, including members of the audience. The other thing that I wanted to give out, just relevant to this, is the cost of special education, it's a, it's a program, and I've got 20 copies, so there's enough for everyone, so let me pass them this way, and then pass them this way, plenty for the audience. This is something we used to do on an annual basis. Donna Peany had done it. We went back to 1995 or so, just to take a look at, you know, what the costs look like. The information here, you know, there's some ups and downs and so on in terms of the percent of the total budget. Last year, for FY 2007, the costs of special education were 19.2% of the total budget. That, it would have been about $840,000 more than that, if not far the circuit breaker. $840,000 is a little bit over 2%, so it would have been in the 21.2, 21.3 or 4 range, something like that. This year, the, all we have right now is budgeted figures. We don't have any of your figures for FY 08, because we won't have that data until probably July or so, or August, or something like that, because it takes a while for it to total it. But it gives you a sense of what happens with it, and you can see that there are some fluctuations. You can also see where the circuit breaker has been, as Jerry has said to us on several occasions. It's been a huge support, and one of the things about circuit breakers is it helps every district in the state. So next time, we're thanking our legislators. That's certainly a thing to thank them for. Anyway, I wanted to share that. Ken, I hope you got a copy of this data. I just got it myself this afternoon, updated, and I wanted to share it with the public since we're talking about special ed.
Can I just ask a question? So the circuit breaker number is in addition to what we're spending on the
That's correct.
First number isn't the actual total total, because you have to then add circuit breaker into that. Is that right?
Well, the circuit, the figure for out-of-district tuition is asterisked up above. For example, let's take FY 07 is $2,943,530. That's the amount after the circuit breaker has been factored in. Isn't that right, Jerry?
Yes, Elizabeth had it correct. The 2.9 million is charged to the budget, then in addition to that, 800,000 would be charged to circuit breaker.
Okay.
So the total out-of-district is roughly 3.7 million.
Thank you.
Yeah. I had to go check that myself today with Donna to make sure I had the right numbers. So, anyway, just some additional information regarding special education costs and so on. Any questions for Ken or Bernadette?
I had more, some comments than questions, I guess. I found it fascinating to look at these data, because I haven't ever looked at them before, so I really learned a lot about our system and who we're serving, and I actually thought, though I have no idea whether it's significant or not, that there were some trends there in four years' worth of data. And it looked to me like there was actually somewhat of a decrease in numbers, particularly at the high school and in grades 10, 11, and 12. I think maybe not in grade nine, because grade nine happens to be a very large class, so it may look different. But I thought that it did look like numbers were going down, and in addition to the fact that they were going down, it seemed like there was some reflection of a greater move towards inclusion, because there was a decrease in the number of the, integrated up to 25% separate, and an increase in general education modified. And I thought that that is reflective of something that we've been trying to do, something that you've been trying to do since you came here, and at the high school level, both helping kids move towards independence and creating more opportunities for them to be included in the regular education classrooms. So I actually could see that. Whether it's significant or not, I actually thought that that's, that that was there. And another thing that I found kind of fascinating was the various disabilities and how kids in the early years are, come in with developmental delay and communication and autism, and then sort of as time moves on, those get moved into sort of more specific categories. And then it looks to me like in the middle school years, that's when we've got the greatest number of placements. Does that, does that seem to be, I mean, that's what it looked like to me. I don't know if that's, you know, if that's typical, that there's kind of, we work our way up in middle school and then kind of off again in high school.
I think, I think that's fairly accurate.
I thought that was, that was very interesting, and that the disability that shows up in that time the most is the specific learning disabilities and some of the emotional stuff, which also seems to, seems to make sense. But anyway, like I said, I found it to be fascinating to look at it and have the opportunity to understand the system in a way I hadn't before.
Yeah, I think that's important, Ann, and I think that maybe over time what we can do is continue to look at these numbers, and, you know, you pointed out some interesting things to look at, perhaps we could even start charting these by level of system, K to 4, 5 to 8, and 9 to 12, and take a look at what the numbers are. It looks to me like the out-of-district placements have increased over time, and then that out-of-district placement includes the Lab Collaborative, which is sort of a nearby out-of-district placement, because it's a local part. And, you know, many of them are held here in Belmont, though other ones are in Lexington, Arlington, Bedford, and Burlington. The, part of the thing we want to do is make sure we provide the services for those that have the greatest disabilities and for those that have the least disabilities, move them into the least restricted environment as soon as possible. So it appears to me that, to some extent, that may be happening with the data that we're looking at, but once again, I guess we, you know, we take more of an analysis, perhaps more long-term a look at this before we can really tell what's happening with it.
I thought it was very interesting to have this alongside with the survey that we'll be hearing about shortly, and that it wasn't surprising to me to see that there was a change that we were trying to make at the high school level. And any time you're trying to implement something new, you've got to sort of work out some issues, so it's not surprising that in the survey, the place where there were some issues illuminated was at the high school.
For the second autism inclusion program at Burbank, how many total students are you anticipating?
I'm gonna let Bernadette speak to that.
Currently, I think it's around eight.
Will be at Burbank?
Yes.
And then how many at Wimbrooke, about the same?
About nine. And then there's some at Channery and High School.
Right. But, I mean, the reason for the second one at Burbank is so that you can spread it out so it's more inclusive.
It's the elementary being less cumbersome at Wimbrooke.
Okay.
That's a good point. Laura, the cost of the program is an inclusion model. It's very difficult to absorb that many students on the spectrum.
Right. Well, that's what I'm wondering, is that you have more kids on the spectrum than NT kids, and that you're spreading it out.
Yep, that was the main reason we needed to look at making a shift.
Okay.
This single sheet that you passed out for the history of sped cost control, 2003 through recent, I just noticed that the salaries for teachers did have not gone up much or even down a little bit, and with inflation taken into consideration, that means probably fewer numbers of teachers?
I suspect it's retirements.
All right, all right.
I suspect that what's happened is some of the more senior teachers that are made more money retired, and then what we've done is brought in some junior teachers who then here every year will increase on this. One of the things that's not on here and would be interesting to have is then have at the bottom our official October 1 numbers, or is it, is it October 1 or December 1 for special ed?
October.
October 1, okay. At one time, the state kept special ed numbers at two or three different times of the year, so October 1, just to have that also.
Plus the number of staff.
Yeah, plus the number of staff, right.
Not just the dollars.
Yeah. I mean, what we wanted to do is try to capture as much data as we could on one sheet of paper, so that's
Yeah, that's actually, that was pretty useful.
Yeah. One of the things that people may not be aware of, obviously, there's a lot of information when it comes to special ed. There are all kinds of counts. We have all kinds of accounts. The state, in requiring this reporting, is taking a look at this data also and doing a number of different reports back to us. The disproportionality report, you know, do you have too many of one type of disability? They take a look at the stratification across disabilities, age, race, gender, and if a red flag goes up, they report back to us. And every year, they're sending us new reports. This year, we're doing a report on, we are required to do a report, follow-up on our graduates. So last year, we were required to get information for all of the high school graduates, and this spring, we've been spending time attempting to contact all of the high school graduates to find out where they ended up, and there's a whole questionnaire, and we have to report back to the state on that. So in addition to everything that's provided to you folks, you know, all of what we're doing is being analyzed at the state level, and they keep coming back at us and saying, oh, that's kind of interesting, we want you to do more, which we're doing.
This is high school graduates that have had IEPs, that graduated with IEP or had IEP at any time in their career, or?
They would have been on an IEP at the time of graduation.
I see.
So is the state displeased with anything? Since you said you raised red flags for certain issues? Any particular areas?
This year, no. Last year, they evidently came in and did an extra, asked us to do some extra information gathering on our response to requests for initial evaluations, and that was part of our coordinate program review as well this year, but in the past, some But in the past, something flagged them, and they wanted us to look into that a little further. And they determine a certain percentage of compliance that all districts are supposed to have. We were outside of that a little, but because we were also in the process of our coordinated program review, our response to that, our corrective action plan served the purposes they were looking for.
Good, thanks.
With the request from the state about what high school seniors or graduates are doing, is that connected to the transition plan of seeing how the transition plan was supportive of the kids' goals? Are they just looking at the IEP? Are they doing, how are they doing academically?
They've identified it as simply an outcome study. I think right now, they're wanting to take a look at where are kids ending up who were on IEPs at the time of their, and it's actually the time they left high school, whether they dropped out, they aged out, or they graduated. And we are part, not every district is doing that. Somehow we lucked out and got chosen to be a pilot. And so I'm not sure what they're going to do with the data.
Ms. Green?
I just wanted to elaborate on this discussion to sort of put it in a bigger context that, I don't know if you know, that the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act of 2004, at the, from the federal level mandated that all states should be measuring 20 performance indicators. One of those, a couple of those indicators are actually, have to do with transition and outcomes for students with disabilities post-school. And, you know, this is a very important effort, I think, because, you know, we've been doing special education for, you know, since the 70s, when the law was enacted, but nobody's really studied, what happens to these kids? Are we doing special education right? And so what the state is doing is following the mandate of the federal government to start collecting data on what happens to kids after graduation. If we're part of a pilot study, that's probably because the state is trying to figure out what the best way is to collect that data and to look at some of the initial data and figure out how they're going to do it more broadly in the statewide. So that's the sort of context of that. It really, I mean, I realize it's a pain for individual districts to collect, to be constantly collecting data, but in this case, it's a pretty important initiative.
Okay, anybody else still?
Thank you.
Thanks very much, Ken and Bernadette. Bernadette, are you enjoying it here in Belmont?
It's amazing.
The next report we have is a report on special education survey, and the co-chairs are Amanda Green and Stephanie Werner. And I notice they have a PowerPoint presentation for us, so we're looking forward to it. Everyone has a copy of the report already.
On the, on the, on the.
Oh, yeah.
Standing on the chair. Just push the button on the wall.
Something on the wall.
Sometimes.
Just right here? Push the button right here?
I think so.
It's the worst that can happen.
Never seen Lee stand on a chair. It says power, so.
I know, but there's no power light on.
Do I put source or power?
Pat, can you, excuse me?
Hi.
Source.
Source?
It works.
How many engineers does it take to do this?
No, no, it takes a tall, tall engineer. Not just any kind of engineer.
You're gonna catch me. That's old, Jerry.
It takes one director finding.
See, see a power.
Okay, good, you okay?
Amanda knows how to do it.
Good going, good balance. No backflips.
This is part of that last line in the job description?
Whatever it takes.
Night yet?
Night yet. I didn't really do it. Do we use source? That was power, right?
I'm gonna go and talk about the first couple of slides while Amanda's trying to figure out if we can get the slides up. I think that we sent everybody on this, at this table, a copy of the report, so you all should have gotten that, I think even in, in color.
Yes.
Which was.
Highly appreciated.
Yeah, looks great.
Makes it a lot easier to interpret things now.
Oh, I was, we were careful with the grayscale too, though, to make sure that.
Do you have copies of the PowerPoint?
I didn't. Did I?
I can go and get copies for you.
So one of the things that, there's probably the question, why a survey? And there are really three reasons for, a couple of big reasons for the survey. One is, is that parents of children on, parents and guardians of children on IEPs have never been systematically surveyed regarding the special education services. And then the second has to do with what Amanda was talking about, which was the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act reauthorization, where the federal government is mandating that the states collect 20 performance indicators. And one of the performance indicators has to do with the importance of schools facilitating parent involvement as a means of improving services and results for children with disabilities. This survey here highlights Belmont's special education successes and challenges from the point of the view of the parents. And our hope is that the public schools will benefit from this new mode of participation. So first, I'm gonna go over about the survey and what our methodology was. This is an online survey, and we targeted it to all the parents and guardians of the students in the Belmont school system on IEPs. And with that, we have to give lots of thanks to the school department, the principals, the Metco, the, everybody was helpful and put this out on the list serve and put it out on the website. We used 34 questions, mostly they were drawn from the Parent and Family Involvement Survey, which was developed by the National Center for the Special Education Accountability and Monitoring. As I said, we recruited respondents from the list serves. The survey was up for a month, so we handed out several different reminders. And so it was administered from mid-February through mid-March 2008. Respondents were guaranteed confidentiality, and we solicited comments.
It's coming.
It says, please, please, don't turn it.
I think this is the blind leading the blind, but I fumbled a little closer down the tunnel. Keep talking, Stephanie.
Okay, I'll keep talking. I have my clicker when we're ready, okay?
Good, good. Look, Stephanie.
Click, see if it does something.
No, it's doing it on the, on the stage. See if F7 will do it on the, on the machine.
What, control F7?
Just F7.
Bruce McDonald would say you can hear it.
Okay. Okay, so let's talk first about who answered the survey. We had 270 parents and guardians out of a total of 527, there are 527 children on IEPs. So two people were allowed to answer the survey twice if they wanted to, so they could answer. If you have more than one child on an IEP, you could go back in, you were not locked out, and you could answer for each child. We asked parents to answer for the preceding, for the preceding year. So this was not about your experience with special education all throughout the whole time, but really for the preceding year. We had 51% of the relevant population thus answered the survey. 68 parents of high school students, 68 parents of middle school students, 105 parents of elementary school students, and 28 parents of preschool students. We're pretty, we're very happy in making some inferences about the high school, middle school, and elementary. We're a little more careful about the preschool, because that is, we're not quite sure if that's statistically significant or not. 231 of the 270 students are in district. Got three people over there working. So first, we're gonna go over the successes in Belmont's special education. And I think some of them are really quite something to really be proud of. Parents on all levels report that teachers have high expectations. Parents on all levels agree that teachers, administrators, and therapists are professional and responsive. The great majority of the parents feel they're included as equal partners with professionals in planning their child's IEP. And special education professionals at every level are credited with successfully implementing the needed accommodations and modifications. Most parents feel that the evaluations conducted by the school personnel accurately reflect the student needs and that the IEPs are written with measurable goals. Measurable goals is quite important, because there's, you need to have a way so that you can tell if your child is actually progressing or not on the IEP. Most parents feel that their children are making progress toward those goals. And at the elementary and preschool levels, parents report overwhelmingly that the teachers understand each child's needs and the teacher's role in implementing the IEPs. And a large majority of parents also report that elementary and preschool teachers collaborate effectively with these special educators. I don't have, if you were to look at, say, for example, the expectations of success, you will see what a terrific, what a graph that shows what terrific outcome is, in that there's lots of green in your graph, in that one, on expectations of success. So the mean on that one was people on the whole felt graded, were satisfied, four out of a five. There are some challenges that we did identify in this survey. The provision of the services at the high school is a challenge. High school parent satisfaction drops to 50% or below in parents' perceptions of teachers' understanding of their role in implementing the IEP, teachers' willingness to learn more about the needs of the students on IEPs, the therapist's understanding of the needs of students with the IEPs, general educators, so this is opposed to the special education professionals, so general educators' implementation of the accommodations and modifications as indicated on the IEPs, and collaboration between the regular and special education teachers to assure that the IEP are implemented, and the provision to students that all supports and services are documented on the IEPs. And we think that this is an important thing to point out, because all of these things actually are a liability to the system. The IEP is a document that must be followed. And if parents are not, if their perception is that, that the school, that the general education teachers don't know how to implement it, and that their student is not getting all of the supports and services that are documented, that is not, that places the school, the school does have some liability in that case. I think we're giving up on these slides.
We did give up. These are very pretty, those stuff, for those of us that have it.
If you look at, for instance, I, in my lovely slideshow, I highlighted what, a couple of graphs where you can see the perceptions. And I'm gonna hold this up so that you can at least see what you have here. Again, it's in grayscale, but you will notice that at the elementary and preschool level, parents are very, very satisfied that teachers demonstrate an understanding of their role in implementing the IEP, and that general education teachers make accommodations and modifications as indicated on the IEP. And that by the time you get to high school, with middle school being an interim, you will see that parents become more and more dissatisfied. A second area of concern is really the provision of related services. Parents in general were very satisfied with the amount of physical therapy that their children were getting. But if you ask parent, when we ask parents about the amount of speech therapy that they thought their child needed, preschool parents, 41% of the preschool parents were dissatisfied with that. And actually, there is dissatisfaction across the board, it's just most evident at the preschool level. And then if you asked about the level of occupational therapy that the parents believed, with the occupational therapy that was provided, 38% of the parents were dissatisfied with, again, dissatisfaction across the board, though not at the levels of high school. Some of the additional challenges, only 50% of the parents were satisfied that Belmont explained to them what options they had when, when they disagreed with the decision that the school had made. 33% of the parents were, only 33% were satisfied that Belmont provided disability awareness education to students without disabilities. Only 42% of all parents surveyed are satisfied that Belmont solicits their input when evaluating the effectiveness of special education programming. Parents of out of, of children who are in out-of-district placements either did not feel that the school collaborated with them when determining a placement, or that they had several placement options to choose from. The middle school, although not at the same level as the high school, parents of middle school students on IEPs are less satisfied than the elementary and preschool parents, but again, they're more satisfied than parents of high school students. Homework is an interesting one, because at the middle school, only 45% of the parents were satisfied that their children were give, were able to complete homework with minimal or no parental assistance, which suggests that teachers were not making accommodations and modifications that would help the children when they came to doing the homework by themselves at home. But at the high school, parents were satisfied at the 59% level. And only a little over half of parents were satisfied that Belmont communicates regularly with them regarding the student progress on the IEP goals. So we have two primary recommendations. One is, we'd like to suggest that we convene a collaborative task force composed of administrators, teachers, parents, and students on issues that might include the optimal organization of scheduling and structure of the school day, professional development, and personnel resources. And then the second is, we'd like to suggest that the school committee and administration consider whether additional funds can be a portion to address parental concerns about related services. We have some additional recommendations, such as increasing parent education. The new website seems to be a perfect venue that we might be able to use to increase parent education. Solicit more parent feedback in collaboration with the BSEAC, so we could do additional surveys, we could run some focus groups. We also think that we should evaluate whether the levels of dissatisfaction at the middle school merit additional evaluation. There are, consider how homework might be structured at different school levels so that students can successfully complete the assignments at home, and that possibly look into investigating how technology, for instance, email, Google calendars, teacher websites can be used to facilitate and increase regular communication between the parents and teachers. And finally, I think that there's a lot to celebrate in this survey, although there are some concerns that are evident, especially at the high school level. The BSEAC would like to thank the parents who responded to the survey, and we would very much like to thank the Belmont administrators, staff, and teachers for their thoughtful consideration and for their support. And finally, by the end of the week, we'll have the full report on the BSEAC website, so if you would like to download it, it will be available.
Report is going to be us?
Yes. So, any questions?
Again, more of a comment than a question. I thought this was an exceptionally well-done piece of work, the survey itself, the report, and that this is an incredibly valuable piece of work for our district, that you've done a fantastic job of illuminating the strengths and the weaknesses of our system, a fantastic job of giving parents a voice, a fantastic job of showing your organization's willingness and desire to work collaboratively with the administration to address some of what you've illuminated here. And I think it's all been done in a very constructive way that, that all of us can use to look at what some of those challenges are. I mean, it fits very nicely with sort of the system's culture of self-examination and continual improvement. And this is, you know, you've taken a step of the self-examination, so we can work on some continual improvement.
Thank you.
I also appreciate the effort that you went through. One of the aspects of this that folks may not be aware of is, as part of our federal
And this is, you know, you've taken a step of the self-examination so we can work on some continual improvement.
Thank you.
I also appreciate the effort that you went through. One of the aspects of this that folks may not be aware of is, as part of our federal grant, we are required to do a program evaluation. And it's left up to the district to determine how we want to do the evaluation, what we want to evaluate. You can do one component of your program, you can do your overall program. As Stephanie mentioned, I'm not sure, I've only been here in, you know, a little under two years, but I'm not sure if parents were involved to any extent. And that is certainly one way districts can add to their program evaluation. So, I think it was a great, you know, I didn't have anything to do with coming up with the idea. The BSEAC came up with it, but I certainly supported it because I thought it was another piece of information that could be very useful to us. Thanks.
You're welcome, thank you.
I think it serves as excellent baseline data that we can use and then move forward from that. And I think you have some people that are really good in statistics on this, Stephanie and Bill.
But we also have.
We're gonna get you to do some of our reports. It's very nice, it's very well-done, and I think it really does serve us as we move into the future. As Hannah said, it serves as a baseline that we can continue to build on and then move forward on it. To my knowledge, I don't think we've ever done a survey just of special ed parents unless it's maybe something that's been required by either the state or the federal government. But I can't recall doing it.
People were quite excited.
Oh, they're good.
Yes.
Really, to be asked.
To be asked, well, not only that, we also had, I think there's actually untapped demand actually for regular education parents too because we did have parents who talked to us about, that they had heard about the survey, but they knew that it wasn't for them. So, I do know that there is some untapped.
Right, now, we had done a parent survey twice broadly. I'm trying to remember, 19, Pat, do you remember, 98 maybe, and 2003 or something?
Did you say 1996?
96, I mean, we did it twice, though, maybe 96 and 2001 or 2002. But I have some of that data in the back office somewhere. The thing that I would wanna do is, is ask Ken and Bernadette to read this thoroughly, as well as the principals, and then confer particularly with, with Ken and Mike Harvey and review particularly the concerns that you have at the high school or the concerns not that you have, but that the parents have at the high school, to investigate this and just brainstorming a little bit with it. Ken had come up with the notion that he could sit down with parents and invite parents in to talk with him about some of the things that are, that are mentioned here and perhaps getting a conversation going on some of these issues and then could use that to move forward as well, so.
Something I find might be interesting is, you talked about doing a parent survey, another one, but if it were sort of similar to this one, so you could sort of, you know, compare whether, how am I going with this?
Well, some of the questions actually are, you could.
Like a third of them, it seems like it could be.
A third of them you could go.
Whether the high school parents are less satisfied than the, because they feel less clued in than the elementary school parents district-wide, not just special ed. Just to compare this, maybe you could, you know, draw some conclusions that, you know, maybe it's just the age.
I don't know, I, I'm not quite sure, I don't have enough data to really say. I think that there are a wide variety of areas that you could look at. I think that looking at this data, it does suggest that the interactions, the staff here are just, the staff and teachers are terrific at the person-to-person interactions. There may be some structural and procedural issues that some work could be done on.
You know, I'm actually, I'm fascinated by this because I'm trying to do something similar in medical education. But, you know, this is the kind of thing that once you develop this kind of survey, first of all, you can modify it for other uses. But you also now have a tool, as you said, as a baseline to move forward. And I wouldn't want, you know, change to happen, but not, but for that change not to be evaluated again using the same tool because you really have a lot of, a lot of things that you can look at then and point to where things have gotten better and sometimes where things have gotten worse because you've made modifications somewhere else. And I, you know, it takes, it takes a lot to develop these and the, and the statistics of Likert scales are interesting. But we're gonna have to talk. But I think this is fabulous.
Hannah, stay at the table, let me go to the others.
I just wanted to say, it doesn't feel that surprising to me to, to find some of what you illuminated at the high school level, partly for the reasons that you talk about in the report about, you know, at the elementary level where kids are just with one teacher and that teacher has a chance to get to know them, you know, get to know sort of all aspects of them. And as you move along and then you get to the high school where, you know, teachers have every, every thought, they've got a new set of kids and, you know, the number of kids that they see, their ability to actually get to know individual kids is very different than what it is at the elementary level. But it's also not surprising to me that, as I said when Ken was giving his report, that at the high school level, if the goal is really to start moving kids towards independence and if we've got a goal of, of including kids, doing as much inclusion as we can, and that's, that's a new, a new frontier to be pushing. And it's not surprising that we would start to illustrate that traditionally, the regular ed teachers haven't been trained on inclusion. So, you know, that's something that teacher training needs to catch up with, this push to include kids at the high school level.
On modifications, on accommodations.
Exactly.
What does it mean to modify curriculum, things like that?
Right, so, it's just highlighting things that I would expect that we would, we would see as we try some new things.
Leslie?
One question, Stephanie or Amanda either, I'm sure can answer this. When Stephanie was running through the non-PowerPoint PowerPoint, and I was looking at the, the survey, when you're talking about teachers, for the most part, you're talking about special education teachers, correct? Because then you talk about regular ed, regular ed teachers as a separate set of.
We actually, if you look at the questions, the questions actually ask general education teachers versus special education teachers. At the elementary school, those often get conflated because your special ed, your, your elementary school teachers often have special education training. So, you will start to see more of a difference with resource teachers and general education teachers once you get up into the middle school and to the high school. Although you do have resource teachers at the elementary school. But we did try to keep, we did try to separate that out by, by calling them general education teachers versus special education teachers.
For the most part, not that it was confusing, but I had a question that you've, but you've just answered it. And did you say one of your recommendations, further study at the high school or middle school? I think you said middle school, but you might have meant high school, because that seemed to be what the biggest.
Well, one of the issues is, is it's absolutely clear from looking at all of the, the graphs and the statistics that you actually, that there is a much higher level of parental dissatisfaction at the high school. But if you look at the, across the, the four age levels, you can group the preschool and the elementary school pretty easily together. And you will see the middle school being a, in between the elementary and the high school. And it's just not clear to us whether that's, that's just a baseline level of dissatisfaction, if there's some reason that it's increasing over time. We don't have enough data to actually say, is there an increasing level? Or is there just something about a structure of, of the school as, as you move up levels? We don't have quite enough information.
So, would it be fair to say you'd like to have further study of both the middle and the high school?
I think that we decided that the high school looked more immediate, that, that to us seemed like it was more of a, of an issue.
If you had to prioritize them, it would be further study at the high school, or further work at the high school, further study of the middle school, to see if this is okay.
Yes, that's, I think, if I had to prioritize, but.
Okay, that's great. And I think one of the, the things that I've heard from other parents and experienced myself is that, is the kids get higher up in the schools. It's sort of as Anne had said, when the teachers don't know the kids as well, there's a bit more of a reluctance, especially at the high school. You know, the pressure gets geeked up quite a bit. If I went to one more meeting last fall at Parents Night and heard the word rigorous one more time, I thought it would tear my hair up. And there seems to be, you know, we have to get kids ready for college, and then we have the special ed kids, and what do we do? Well, we have the resource room for that, but, well, but in the classroom, there may need to be some modifications made. And there's a reluctance for kids with special ed plans to take honors classes because that's, are we dumbing it down? Are we softening, I think there's a great deal of education that needs to go on. I mean, there's great colleges that have fantastic special ed programs and learning disabilities programs that really support kids. And to have that start in the high school so kids don't feel like they are not going to be able to go to college or good colleges because they have an IEP, and to have that remedied by, oh, but you can do your homework in the resource room, is nowhere near enough. I mean, the regular teachers need a lot of support and education for how to make accommodations in those classrooms. It isn't just, well, everybody has, you know, 10 math homework problems, but you, without saying that you have an IEP.
I get less.
You like it, but, you know, then there are gaps sometimes in your education, you know, and then the, it's a big, it's a big issue. So, I'm not surprised to see what you've seen.
Well, for the, for that point, making a modification, actually decreasing the workload might be one, but there's actually many different kinds of.
Exactly.
Modifications and accommodations besides just decreasing workload. In fact, with the right kinds of modifications and accommodations, often the work stays the same, it just becomes somewhat different.
When my now-junior was in eighth grade, there was a teacher swap day, and he was Mike Harvey for the day, who he'd had for, for history. And he said, he, we went to him and Mr. Harvey said, well, here's what we're talking about. Do you wanna teach it a visual way or auditory mode, or would you like to do it totally oral? And so I said, you do this for every class, you think about the different ways that you're teaching this? And that's, I think, a dream come true for any parent of special ed kid or regular ed kid. You know, I, I have a master's in special ed, and I was taught that most of us learn by jumping over the gaps in our education. Any of us could learn from a prior, a variety of approaches. But as you get up, it's more lecture and visual. And if you're not particularly adept in those areas, it's more and more frustrating. So, thank you, thanks to Ken for agreeing to this so readily. I think that's really remarkable. It's very threatening.
Because Pat also helped in terms of getting this out to the listservs on the regular.
It can be a very threatening thing to have your entire program evaluated by people who are hurting for a variety of reasons. Because their kids are hurting, because they're upset, because they don't feel that they're listened to. And they just opened the doors, it was remarkable. And thanks to, to you guys for, this is like the best in volunteerism. I can't imagine the hundreds of hours this has taken, thousands of hours.
Thousands.
And I would love to see some, some concrete recommendations for, for next steps at this table, but I know there are more questions.
Hal, do you have a question?
Yeah, I guess, questions and comments. My name is Paul Schubin, I'm the parent of a seventh grader and a ninth grader, got that right. And my older son's freshman year really was quite an adjustment for all of us. They both have IEPs and have, I think, pretty much their whole time in the schools. Of course, I want to say that I appreciate the work that everybody does. I think all the teachers are concerned and interested and want the kids to succeed. And I don't think the teachers at the high school are any different in that than the teachers in the middle school. So, I mean, I came into this thinking that there must be something systematic, something in the process that makes a difference. I think Anne's comment that as the kids move up, the teachers spend less and less time with each child.